Seeing that it's six o'clock, I'm going to call this meeting of the Enfield Select Board to order. Our first order of business this evening is the public hearing for acceptance of donations greater than $10,000 in aggregate. And you want to get up?
We received a large text for the community nursing of the $30,000 donation from the Burn Foundation. As you guys know, we had the $1,000 from before, so we have the money to enter the first year's agreement. But this public hearing is for your acceptance of the $30,000 from the Burn Foundation.
As well as $125 from another donor. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just a comment that Mrs. Byrne is an incredibly generous person.
She truly is. And so that would bring the total up to $39,225 for projects of a solid start. So thank you to the committee because we know you came and said you were on it, but it's always nice to see on it translate into paper dollars.
And there are a few more individual letters that line up to other donations.
I know that it had been originally discussed that it would take effect in January. With this additional funds, is it possible that they can move their plan up to begin this fall?
No, it'll start in January and this is not even half of the fundraising goal for the two-year.
No, I understood that, but we had said that we wanted them to raise 30,000 for the first year before we would accept the program moving forward.
Well, the other, the other two communities have to get their money too, and that comes in January.
I see.
Very exciting. Are there any questions or comments from the public in the public portion of this hearing? Folks in front of us. Any questions or comments from the public online? Seeing no further comments, I'm going to close this public hearing. And I will ask, what is the pleasure of the board? Someone like to make a motion?
You can motion to accept the donations that was presented with gratitude.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes unanimously. Thank you. I just had a general housekeeping question. When we constituted the fund to receive this, we didn't... I'm not going to get this right, but I don't always nail down the components of the process flow. We didn't authorize you to accept donations in the first instance. Should we have done that? And then it still goes on to here? No? So this is the only way I can go. Okay. I didn't know if you could take...
We'd have to look at our donation policy, and I've started to look into that a little bit to see if we can put a dollar limit in there for the smaller stuff. Be accepted by the town manager.
Right, like a $30,000 check obviously has to come, but I didn't know if there was something that we could be doing to cycle the smaller amounts a little more expeditiously, I guess, without the bottleneck of having to wait for a meeting. That was my next question.
If we could do minutes for the presentation, Roy Holland will be here.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So we're going to jump down to approval of the meeting minutes of July 17th. You have them in your packet. Are there any questions, comments, corrections, or would someone like to make a motion?
Will we accept them as presented?
Second?
Well, second, thank you.
Second by Alice. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes unanimously. Thank you. Keep moving. Let's do board reports, if that's acceptable. Eric, do you have anything?
The planning board had a meeting with a couple of, a couple items that they generated here for Dartmouth's replacement of boat house on Meska Lake. So that, we had their set plan review for that, and then the Shaker Hill Granite property, the subdivision of that for the board was approved. So that'll be moving forward, and then of course will become a piece of property that the town purchases for the new public safety building. And then there's a conceptual hearing around, people probably saw the article in the paper on the Pelorans purchasing the Shaker Valley Auto building and planning to put in a bingo hall. So that was just a conceptual hearing, talking about their plans.
Any questions or comments from the board on that? Moving along to Alice.
And so since we last met, the Enfield Village Association met and had an in-depth debrief of the Shaker Seven race, lessons learned and successes. And they're also going to be having a board retreat in September to examine their mission and activities, making sure that they're aligned and feasible. They had a business coffee in July at Carriage House Events slash Last Bees. And the August business coffee is going to be Friday, August 18th at the Dartmouth Sailing Club. So it might be interesting to go there and talk to people and ask questions. And then also the Heritage Commission met. They had a debrief of old home days, thought it went very well and had some lessons learned for next year. They're currently gauging interest in and looking at opportunities for old home preservation and restoration classes. Something maybe like, so you bought an old house, now what? It's been a lot of conversation about ways to engage the community in those conversations. They had a great interest in understanding the prevention efforts for the vandalism at Meska Lake Side Park. So I don't know if there's any like public discussion about that. They just had questions that I didn't have answers to. And that's it.
I would think that Lakeside Park questions would just go to Ed because that's outside of the purview of heritage. Does that make sense? And then, so if somebody has individual questions, we would send them to Ed and he could send them to the right, right place because kind of that's not really a committee item. Does anybody else have questions or comments for Alice on the board? John, what you got for us?
Nothing from me.
That was fast. Tracy?
The Energy Committee is still working with folks to assist them in any way they can to get and understand a part of the Community Power Coalition, who has hired an executive director at this point. And they've also hired a consultant, Andrew Hatch from Brazilian Buildings Group for the consortium to assist with getting large energy users into the program. One of the smaller notes, and certainly without criticism towards them, is that the school system is not in the Community Power Program because our adjacent neighbor is not in the Community Power Program. So that's something to be aware of and something that if it comes up in discussion, we will certainly encourage them to consider it. Other than that, just put a little blurb that Ed was kind enough to put out on the latest KW rates that take effect August 1st. For those in the Community Power Program, at the base grade, it's dropped to a little over 10 cents a kilowatt, which is a tremendous savings. Tens of thousands of dollars towards the town itself and tens of thousands of dollars as a community through the summary of all the individuals. So it's terrific and well below what certain large utilities are presently charged. That's about it.
Any questions or comments from the board on race events?
I just have a comment that I found it really interesting that like weeks after this Community Power went into effect, I got a notice from Liberty saying that, you know, due to some market magic or something, their kilowatt hour rates were dropping considerably, not as low as what we're getting, but um...
They're trying to compete for your, your business. You may get a little card as well from private companies who would want you to sign up for a two-year program because they're all competing for your business. And right now the Community Power accomplishes that without your needing to either buy from your power supplier or from a private source.
Well, that's so valuable and I'm just so grateful for that group because the rates were going crazy prior to them.
Liberty has apparently also run into some billing problems. A lot of confused people there are.
They've got ongoing billing problems. Their previous problems got worse. The challenge. Conservation Commission did not meet Thursday. Dr. Price had another item on his agenda or schedule. And so we have rescheduled Conservation Commission to August 17th. That's not this Thursday, but the following Thursday at 7:00 PM. Anyone wants to join us? And I will just throw out there that Conservation Commission has an open seat due to a departure. So if anybody would like to be on Conservation Commission, they can get a form into at or Lisa, or I'll give you one. That's it for board reports. Are there any questions or comments from the public on board reports overall? Folks online? Okay. I'd like to go back up to Police Department presentation. Chief, I think, come on up and I believe you need to bring someone else with you. We have Chief Holland and Officer Matthew Acker.
So about, what, five, six months ago, we brought Officer Acker in to meet the select board. And we're just here to publicly recognize him for he's completed the 800 hours of the police academy along with another 600 additional hours of field training. And so Officer Acker is now a full-time certified Enfield Police Officer who is out on his own solo. And I just wanted to take this time to publicly recognize him for that. It's not an easy, it's not an easy accomplishment. There have been many people in my 23 years that didn't make it, you know, this far. I think that is exactly the officer, you know, a community-oriented policing officer that we want in our Enfield community. And I hope he's here long past when I retire and, and you know, he's, and keeps going after that. He has roots in the community. His wife is here and they have children. They live in Enfield. So he's also one of those officers that understands the taxpayer part of Enfield too, because he doesn't want. So I just wanted to, you know, publicly congratulate him. He's done a well-done job, well-done.
Why don't we say thank you?
They're here.
We don't say thank you enough.
Please to be true.
All right, now let's have an evening.
You are important. Very important. Thank you so much. We're glad to have these presentations. We're glad to have another team member fully on board. I think with that, we can move down to Town Manager's Report?
Yep. I'm going to kind of segue off of that one. I almost always start with my staff report, but I am happy to announce that we've hired a deputy clerk and it happens to be Officer Acker's wife.
Daisy? Yay, welcome!
We love locking employees.
We don't say that.
Again, she's a, you know, they're Enfield resident, so she's an Enfield resident, so she can fully fulfill that deputy clerk position that we were not able to do when we had someone outside of the town working there. So we're happy to have her. Today was her first day at work and I corralled her into being here to be introduced and
Awesome.
It worked out well with Matt being recognized tonight as well, so.
Congratulations unto both of you.
With that, you know, as you know, we continue to look for police officers. We don't have any success in that yet. I have been working with Chief Holland. We're, we're talking a little bit more seriously about a recruitment bonus type program. We have quite a few things to work out through that, but I'll keep you guys advised as we, as we move through that and the ways that we may fund that if we move that project forward. So we'll continue looking at that. The grounds worker position, we have a temporary employee that we, we hired that's doing a very good job. So we'll continue working with that through the summer. We've looked at a couple of their employees, but nobody that we're, we're jumping at the bit to hire right away. So we're, we're going to just continue looking at that. We'll accept applications as they come in, but later in the fall, we may formally try to, try to get more employees in. But as of right now, our, our temporary worker is doing a good job and we'll, we'll stick with that for now. Light equipment operator kind of took a little bit of twist and through the twists and turns of life, the employee that was leaving us is now still working for us. So he was happy to, I guess in a way, get his job back and we're happy to have him back. So it all worked out and, and we're, we're continuing to move forward. So we do not have an opening there. With that, I'll move on. The Public Safety Building, we continue to work on Public Safety in Whitney Hall projects. We have not had any impact meetings in a while. We're kind of in this process of trying to get bids and get contractors to get back with us. You know how, how busy contractors are right now. So almost every bid that we put out through the, through our contractors have been extended, trying to work with the contractors to give them the time needed to, to give us a good bid. We've also had a little bit of troubles on both projects with the mechanical heating and air part of the contract. So both of them are, are working with contractors that they know, trying to get some reasonable bid numbers to come back. So that's where we're at on the, I guess, on the, the planning and design phase of both projects. As Eric said, we got our subdivision for the Shaker Hill Granite site. With that, I've talked with the attorney and we're finishing up the title work we need to do to prepare the purchase and sale agreement for that piece of property. And then outside of that, I've been working with the library and library trustees and Kate to, to look at the logistics of where Town Hall might move. With the, with the announced sale of Lost Select to the Shaker Museum, we went there and it, it's looking like that's the, that's the building that we're going to end up working with. I'm working with the Shaker Museum right now to see if we can come to terms of some reasonable lease situation, which I'm sure we can. They're being very easy to work with. We're just trying to find the, the right numbers and what we, what we think we can do moving forward. But at this time, it looks like we're going to be leasing the, the gift shop building and the cafeteria type building next to that for the town offices and library. So we'll be on one campus together with plenty of parking and it, it looks like it's going to be really good accommodations for both. It'll also help them out because they'll have too big a buildings going into the winter. If we can move in and keep the lights on and the heat going and those things, it's definitely better than for the buildings and city, right? We'll continue working on that and then we've started the chore of going through the back offices and back hallways of Whitney Hall, trying to get things prepared to actually move and clean stuff up, pack a few things. And so there's some interesting stuff you find.
Oh. How many hundreds of interesting things?
With that, I wanted to give you some update on our DPW projects. DPW's been extremely busy, not to mention the floods and things that have happened, but all the projects that we had slated for them. As many of you may have heard, the Oak Hill Road Bridge is now complete. The intersection's been realigned and approaches have been regraded. The bridge contractor is recommending that the deck and approach is be paved. So we'll be looking at that and we'll be looking at some options for guardrails on the corners of that bridge, but it is open and passable at this time. So I'd like to thank everybody that was involved in that project. The Maple Street Water Project, though it had some twists and turns, that project is now considered substantially complete. The water main's complete. All the connections are made to the marsh well and the service connections are made to the main. The old coronator's shed has been demolished and they're working on punch list items to finish that project up. So we're getting to the end of that project. The water well projects, the pump test is going to be scheduled soon to determine the production of both test wells and samples will be taken to sample the water quality. We are pretty optimistic on the second well that we drilled and we're happy that we made the decision to drill a second test well because it seems that it's going to be more productive than the first one we drilled.
And where will that be?
So I think they're both in that marsh well area.
They are both, okay.
Yeah. They weren't very far from each other and we actually tested to see if we got drawdown in the other one, if they were the same pocket of water and they are not. So that's a good thing as well. The July storms, we continue to work on reimbursement and working with FEMA on that. FEMA did visit Enfield at the end of July to survey damage and gather information. Some repair spots will need upgraded repairs in the coming months. And then I put in another note, I've had a lot of people approach me. I did attend the Crystal Lake Association meeting on Sunday and a lot of people talked about stormwater damage and some things. So it's on, it's on everybody's mind and we will be looking at, at stormwater management plan as part of the watershed plan and just what we can do to minimize these. As we know, the climate's changing and these, these downpour type storms are going to be more and more often. So the more we can do to mitigate stormwater and to be more resilient during those storms, the, the better off we'll be at the time. With that, I did want to give you an update on the, on the normal water wells. As you guys, I let the select board know, we had some issues last week. We had some wells go down and we were, I guess limping along would be the way to say it, but we never did lose water. We are at a spot now where we have three wells back online and the last one will be repaired tomorrow. So we should be back up to full capacity by tomorrow. So I thank the water guys again for not only working throughout the week, but I looked at time cards last week and they spent a lot of time over the weekends and evenings making sure that the water was continuing to work and the well, or the, the water tank was full. So just thank them for putting in the extra time and work to keep things running. Our scoping of the sewer system work is mostly complete. Right now, the company's putting together a list of issues and projects that we can do moving forward to, to help maintain our, our stormwater system and sewer system so we don't get stormwater in there. Here you go, Dan. The RRFP, school crossing, the lights at the school crossing, we're doing Pathways Consulting is continuing to work on the siding of the enhanced crosswalk units. There may need to be a change to the lighting on the outside around the street by the school before the, before the state will allow those lights to be installed. So we're continuing to work on that and the engineering that goes along with it. And BPW is preparing the pedestals for mounting at those tunnels. We'll continue engineering.
Do we have any compliments at all that that could be done by the beginning of school?
I'm going to say probably not.
This is state or, we're not basically, they've got extra special rules for them. Yeah.
We'll continue engineering. We got to see if there needs to be light pole movement and those types of things to put them in. So it's crazy. The DPW storage shed out back here, the construction on the shed is complete. I am happy to announce that through the use of materials that they had laying around and some creativity by the BPW department, the total cost of the shed that's out there comes in around $7,560. So they did a good job putting things together and saved the town a lot of money if we had to build that from scratch, so.
Does that mean they're beginning things from shed street?
I hope so because that's going to be demolished.
I'm just saying.
I didn't put that in my update, but I probably should have.
Favorite topics.
The RF, the RFP for Shed Street abatement and demolition has been released. And then I did release an RFP as well for hazard assessment on Whitney Hall for the construction. But the RFP for Shed Street is out on the street right now for demolition contractors. Can you look at that? BPW right now is working with the library and rec director to install 18 posts for a storybook pack in the Shaker Ball Field. Thought that'd be a good place to kind of go around. So parents that are there with their kids at practice can take younger ones and go on a story walk while they're there. So good use of those fields and good project. That was a grant-funded project by the East charitable foundation. So we thank them for their donation as well. And then the first pass of roadside mowing on town roads is complete in the fall. They'll make another pass. Get ready for, for the winter. That's my town manager report.
Any questions or comments from the board? Sorry, yep, go there.
Two quick questions. One, with the old shed being removed, is there any thought on that postage stamp lot that we now have that's empty? Or is that just that I've thought about yet?
I haven't thought about it enough.
I'll throw that up just as a open question this one. And then at one point, there was planned to repave the road as well from Maple Street. Where does that stand?
They're going to finish the project and they'll be getting to that, but I don't know that it'll get done this year.
On a little different note, Johnston Beach, I was out there yesterday and I noticed we've been mowing it on a regular basis and that's terrific. I think that's appropriate. However, the doors have been broken off of the shed that's out there and it's full of paint, pesticides and other chemicals. That needs to be cleaned up if at all possible fairly quickly. There's a lot of material out there. And being adjacent to the lake, that's a rather risky thing.
Yeah.
Doors are, yeah.
There's also a back...
They've been off for some...
They've been loose, but one actually worked to block part of it. There's also a lead to shed on the back of it. That has material in it as well.
Yeah, and I think, I noticed, I sent to, the A-frame door handle was gone. You saw that? It was locked. Ah, summertime. Okay, Alice, did you have any questions or comments on Town Manager's Report?
No.
John?
Nope, thank you.
Hi, Tracy, did you have anything else?
I'm on the tip.
I don't have anything either. So let's move down to the business of the evening. So we're going to kick it off with an initial discussion on urban compact. And I just want to emphasize it is an initial discussion. We're going to talk about this as a tool and as you introduce it, but we're not going to make any decisions or try to solve the world's problems right now.
We tell our guests they're free to take off?
Oh, I'm so sorry. You guys can stay.
I told them a while ago.
Okay, okay. We're happy to have you stay. We won't be offended if you decide you have better places to be. Look at, I'm like the small one that's like, my...
Such a...
I know, my kid is like, why are you doing this again? So I get it. But hey, it's a democracy is not as public as exciting. Thank you guys for coming.
Thanks a lot. Thank you.
All right, so you're going to tee us off on the, it's up, sorry?
Yeah, so I just wanted to have a, a little discussion. I don't think we're at a point tonight to really dive into, to the details, if you will, but I wanted to start to talk about this. I did talk to each of your select board members alone. Just so you guys had a basic understanding of this, but I wanted the public to understand it and then give a little bit of history of kind of where the conversation started, where it might be going. And that's really all I wanted to talk about tonight. So there's a, a proposed development along Route Four. Alex is here online. She'll give a little update in a minute, probably not a lot of detail, but just I wanted you guys to know that, you know, there was a, there is a proposed project. It was discussed while we were talking with them that, you know, there's some possible access issues and if the town would be willing to talk about the possibility of creating an urban compact area, which in long story short, I guess, is taking a portion of or a section of Route Four and making it more of a class five road that the, or class four road that the town would maintain. And it, and it has to be in a compact type area. In a, and it has to be in a compact type area, which the state defines. As an area that's mostly filled with residential, commercial. Area. So it's not big open spaces that you can make an urban compact, but it has to be more of an urban type setting. Um, with that comes a lot of responsibility, it becomes your road like any other road. So you have to maintain it, pave it, take care of it, but you also have a little bit more control over the, the rules on it, the speed limit. You know, other things you wanna do. Some people may have the same reaction I had when I first heard it was, yeah, I don't think we wanna do that. And the more I started thinking, we went through our strategic planning discussion. There's been a lot of discussion about slowing traffic down, maybe putting traffic calming measures along Route Four. If we want more. Of these R R F B crossings to make safe, you know, pedestrian traffic and things safer. This really opens up a lot of those opportunities. But then it also opens up some opportunities to do some negotiation and work with developers for access in and out of of their parcels. So it's something that I think we need to weigh very seriously, we need to look at. I am, I won't go ahead too much, but um, I think it, you know, there's obviously a cost. Associated with if you take it over, but we need to look at whatever proposed developments there. What other developments might follow a development? You know, if you get a two to three hundred housing unit. Development, there's good possibilities for other future development, not necessarily residential, but. Grocery stores, coffee shops, those types of things that might come that out and have a benefit to the town as well. Another thing to think about that we've talked about in strategic planning, we've talked about a lot and it's. Throughout the master plan is trying to encourage development. Along those corridors where we have water sewer, along those main road areas to. To maintain and enhance the rural character that we have throughout most of Enfield and still have that development potential. So those, those are all things that kind of went through my head before I decided to bring this forward for discussion. But um, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Alex, she can, she's gonna slightly introduce the project. We were, we were gonna talk a little bit more tonight, but they've. I'll let her talk, but they've made a, a decision to move forward with some investment on this project. I wanted you guys to learn about that. And then I'll talk to you a little bit more about what that means for town. So go ahead, Alex.
Thanks Ed, thanks so much everyone for uh, having me here tonight. My name is Alex Monastar. I work with Chinburg Builders on their land acquisition and land development uh, throughout the state. And so we've been looking at the La Croix parcel, which if you don't know is between Lovejoy Brook Road and Anderson Hill Road off of Route Four. Um, and since that parcel was re- rezoned by the town to allow some higher density development. Where that water and sewer connection is on Route Four, we really just thought it would be a great spot for a neighborhood with multiple residential housing types. So um, the quick vision, which we're sort of trying to nail down while we're going through our due diligence. Is to do a mix of apartments, townhouses and single family houses. To create a, a really unique neighborhood that allows housing types for all sorts of different people that would be looking for housing in that area. Um, and something that we feel really passionate about is offering, you know, unique housing solutions. Um, so hopefully we'd have a mix of housing types for existing enfield residents and. Um, your, your new police officer and his family, uh, as well as, you know, college grads and and things like that. So um, that's sort of the quick low down on the vision out there. And looking at our potential access points uh, connecting to Route Four, we're just running into some challenges based on the existing conditions of. Route Four in that area. So there's a narrower right of way in that area, forty nine and a half feet, which is pretty small for a big. Uh, route like that, state route, usually we see those around sixty feet. Um, and then of course, there's some topographical challenges as well, which is part of what makes it really charming. You know, the slow speed and the hills and the curves in that area, but it is hard to get a road in uh, connecting to a road like that. So we were bumping up against that problem and and taking a look and hearing from your town manager and your town planner. Who have both been so wonderful to work with. Um, and in reading your vision planning and those sort of things, we just saw that this is probably a spot where the town would like higher. Development to be commercial and residential, connecting to those services and creating a, you know, center of town corridor. And maybe there's a unique opportunity to take a portion of Route Four as urban compact, which would. Hopefully be mutually beneficial, where it would allow this type of development to go in and bring in great tax revenue. And hopefully support um, other services in town, but also allow us some flexibility to work with the town. To make decisions that work well for connecting a road uh, in this area. So we're still in the really early stages of our due diligence. As Ed pointed out, um, we have decided to make the initial investment and go for the full survey. Out front there so that we can really nail down what the problems are and what the solutions are as well. So site distance, grade changes and things like that. So we're gonna go ahead and do all of that work now and then hopefully be able to come back in front of you with more detail. And solutions on those problems and see if there's a concrete way that we can work forward to connect in that area. But I just wanted to hop on and introduce myself and let you guys know sort of where this came from and that we did bring it up to the town. Hopefully thinking it could be a great solution for this project and future projects if we can make it viable here. And then looking forward to coming and meeting you all in person, once we have some plans and and details and to get up there. And really give a thorough presentation on Chinburg and the vision for the development.
Wonderful.
With that, I wanted to, I guess, restate again and and let you guys know how, how important that that step was. Um, we had meetings, like, like she said, me, Rob and um, Bob La Croix was there. And then Chinburg Properties and Alex and. You know, we were looking at the, the complexities of the area. Um, you guys probably remember that when we were talking about some of these same parcels with the public safety building. That site distances and those things make it, make it challenging and could make the project extremely expensive. So we're, we're talking about ways to do that, ways to, to make this, I wanna say a little more feasible, but. It's a little bit easier to negotiate with the town than it is with the state as we're, as we're making some of these things moving forward. You know, we can look at changing some, some speed limits, putting in traffic calming, which slows down traffic. If you're slowing down traffic, then site distance can be diminished a little bit and still maintain a safe turn. Those types of things that that we can look at that, that they may not have access to. Or maybe a long drawn out process to do that, which also makes the project unfeasible. So. We were going kind of back and forth and they were wanting, you know, wanting to know if we did entertain this possibility. And, you know, we're looking at, you know, what are the actual problems? So I was, I was really impressed when I, when I got the notification from Alex that they decided to go forward. And put down a, a fairly sizable amount of money to get this survey done and to continue moving the project forward. Before we even had this conversation in the first place. And so, you know, I, I feel the same thing that the. That the Chinburg properties here has been, you know, easy to work with, they wanna work with the town and. It could be a good partnership if we move forward, but there's, as I said in the beginning, there's a lot of complexities and things we need to look at. We need to really be able to nail down the numbers of what the proposal is and move forward. But I think it's, I think this is a conversation we need to start. You know, this is the, the first time it's come up here, but also in our conversation, we talked about. You know, this whole stretch is gonna have these problems, no matter what type of development is looking at coming. So it's something that, that we need to weigh seriously, but not lightly and and continue to work forward. So.
Would this need to go to town meeting?
It does not need to go to town meeting. I, I thought maybe and we asked that question. And the RSA says the select board has the authority to set forth roads. So. Um, but it is something that needs to be a large, open, public process. But.
I'd like to go around the table maybe and just get some actual thoughts. I think we've all expressed some kind of interest to Ed. That we're willing to consider it in the sense that we're willing to look at the facts and figures and and have a conversation. So if you guys are all comfortable with just saying a few words on what you're, you're thinking, um, you know, and what you wanna see as part of the process. Yeah, John.
I, I do think that even though we don't go to town meeting, we do need to have some very open, public meetings, public hearings. Um, you know, keeping in mind that we have been engaged in uh, some significant projects over the last. Five years probably. Um, and you know, I, I don't want the uh, the voters to suddenly think, oh my goodness.
Yeah.
We should tar and feather those guys and ride them out of town on a rail.
Well, there's, yeah, there's a lot of complexities that go into this and, you know, we just.
Yeah, so we need to come up with some, at some point, some, at least rough numbers, right?
Yeah.
What's gonna be the tax impact on the town? And you know, what, what do we think we're going to get out of it other than sort of a nicer area?
Well, that, that's another good point to bring up that, you know, other towns that have extended or developed urban compact areas. Have been able to negotiate with the state to, in a way, do some horse trading for some upgrades or some grades in other parts of town. And so there's a lot of different things to look at in that realm. The other, I don't know if you call it a complexity or a nicety or what, but this whole section is in the district where. Some money had to be outlaid, we do have some money there to do that. Um, and then we will obviously be working and negotiating with our, our prospective developers as well. To, to help ease into some of that.
Yeah, I would, I would hate for the town to carry a significant economic burden from this. Cause I think that should be the developer's burden.
Yeah, and I think that's where looking at the numbers and saying, you know, is it gonna offset? Or is this a good investment to bring more investment into town versus, because there are things in the past we've taken on that maybe. Been a little more challenging. So really, I think doing that, going through the process of looking and saying, is this the good tool for us? Because that's really what this would be, would be a tool for us to determine our, our destiny, but sometimes it's too expen, you have to, you know. Is it too expensive? We don't know. But I think certainly having that conversation, I said to Ed initially, I'm gonna be very candid. Uh, my initial conversation, my initial was, was like, okay, sure, I'm willing to look at anything, right? But I'm gonna wanna see facts and figures. And then my second one was, do we open Pandora's box and people get really upset without any reason? Just out of the initial conversation. And then my third iteration, which was today, was, you know, we have a lot of conversations about the things we want. And that we don't have downtown. And I'm not picking on old home dates by any means, because I think they did a fabulous job. But one of the conversations is, but we don't have a green to have old home days. And I'm not saying we're gonna get a green out of it. But what kind of tools do we have to control our future and how we drive traffic places? Um, and what are we doing to make it so we have a downtown? Um, and so is this a tool to answer some of those where the folks who are already doing a lot of this hard work, you know? What control do we have over signage and turnoffs and sidewalks? As we know sidewalks, right? There's a lot of great businesses up there. Um, we have a lot of folks who do some walking around town and they know sidewalk to nowhere built. Um, with good intent, right? Because it's good to have a sidewalk put in whenever you do a project, but they're disjointed. So I, my initial was, okay, money, right? Do we, can we afford it? Can we make it work out? And then I thought this might be an opportunity as we look at that intersection by Jake's. And what we're gonna do along this corridor to pick our own destiny. And there might be some expense to it upfront, but do would we get it paid back in dividends? Because I think we sit here a lot, and I think I saw a lot of like little chuckles. Um, how often do we sit here and say, well, good luck getting that out of the state? Or good luck getting it on a timeline, right? This is a common conversation right back to the sidewalks. Um, it's a certain amount of bureaucracy have to go to, through where we would be like, here's some sidewalk paint and some wiring and bang, right? You've got a crosswalk, a sidewalk and off you go. You know, it's, there's not like a year's worth of engineering for the crosswalk that's already there. Uh, do we engage in some of that? I don't know. Eric, did you?
Uh, no, I mean, mostly I call you guys have already said, but no, I think it's absolutely a conversation. Had the last couple of years doing master planning and uh, you know, one of the big things coming out of there is a desire to, to build up our village. And one of the impediments is, you know, control of the roads. And so I absolutely think we should have the conversation, is this prudent or not? And we won't know unless we do the due diligence. So I think we need to do it.
I agree. I think, you know, um, there's been a lot of talk about increasing the tax base. And we're gonna have to have these really open, transparent and probably difficult conversations at some point. If the town is gonna grow in a way that we kind of live with.
I agree with the sentiments. Um, I think John made a very good point. I'd like to. Consider this not as a town project, quite frankly. I'd like to consider this as an asset to the town. There's a potential for a developer to do a project, but I'd like us to be aware that this is not a town. Project that we're going to head into that's going to have any um, significant expense to the town in the near term. And I think that needs to be made clear to the public, that that's not the intention of this project, that we're simply trying to accommodate. The needs of a developer to facilitate the project to the benefit of the town.
I think we need to expand our vision. You know, we're, we're not, and we're not engaging in this conversation because of one project. We're engaging this conversation because we have, you know, a mile and a half, two miles of road, all of which has the exact same problem.
Yep.
And is it worth the town effort and energy to solve that problem for every property along that road? And yes, this one project is the impetus to sort of push us, nudge us along. Um, but I don't think we want our vision to be around one project, but as we're thinking about. What the potential of this is, both on a positive and negative side.
Well, and this isn't the only project that has a potential, right?
Yeah.
We've had other proposals. It's simply that nobody has asked this question of us before. And I think it's a, you know, a good question to ask, is this a good tool for us to make downtown more usable? We're also talking about, you know, shortage of housing and especially affordable housing. How do we get that to come into town? How do we support people living and working in a place that's great? And I guess one of my big things and why I'm stuck on sidewalks downtown is I wanna be able to support the folks who wanna age in place and live here, right? And part of being able to age in place is walkability. Um, I also think having, you're never gonna get a good sightline in a little New Hampshire town. That has wagon paths, right? That we used to roll a snow roll, snow roller over to get our horse and buggy out of. And I'm not being like, I'm not kidding on that. That's why it's narrow there, right? You came out of your house with your horse and you got onto the main road, that section. So we just don't have that width of the road. So how do we, we don't wanna go tearing down every one of those houses or even propose that's a good idea. So how do we work with what, what we have and honor the landscape? Cause part of what's fun about living here is that it's not flat and boring, right? Like if we wanted to live in a grid, we'd go live in a, a city or a town that was designed in a grid. So how do we take the natural contours of the land, respect them and keep people safe? Guys have other thoughts? And open it up to the public for questions or comments? Yeah, Dan.
I think, you know, first blush. Think, boy, being able to control that road. Look at the things that have been done there. Look at Jake's. If we had control of that, that is not what would happen for Jake's entrance. In fact, there was a proposed entrance that was in the pipeline, ready to go. And it wasn't District Two that changed, it got changed at Department of Transportation in Concord, who probably have never seen the road. Um, and you know, things like that, our, our ability. To control what we want that stretch to look like is, I think, the biggest thing. It has nothing to do with any project at this point. It has to do with that, that, the control of that area, because it is compact. Um, you know, if you go down Route Four through Lubbock, and you'll see the little sign that says urban compact.
Yep.
Not many people notice it. Um, so I think, you know, yeah, I agree. We've gotta see, is it worth it financially? But it's a bigger question than that. I mean, we, we rezoned that in order for there to be density for the back off the road. Um, so, yeah, and I, I agree, it's a tough spot. I mean, it's coming up by them because it's a tough spot. Between Lovejoy Brook and Shaker and probably up to Rikers. That property goes all the way up through that area and that's probably the toughest spot. If you go Baltic Street Way, it's a lot easier walk, because you can't walk Route Four, the way it is set up now. Yeah.
Go ahead, Dave.
Um, I mean, I, I mean, I'm from a area of fiscal concern. I'm not, not a developer, know very much. Um, I mean, I, I mean, I'm from a area of fiscal concern. I'm not, not a developer, know very much about that sort of thing. But given recent increases in our town budgets, um, I, uh, very concerned about, uh, the town getting left with a, a, a big bait of loss, uh, for a little return.
Anybody else in the audience here? Any of the folks online have a question or comment on this topic? So I think at this point, um, seeing no further comments, we're going to continue to, you know, develop what we know. We have a lot to learn too, right? Urban compacts aren't a straightforward cookie cutter. You do this. There are a lot of options. You've seen some in your packet with examples from Berlin. And there are many other cities who've done different things. So we'll, I'm sure you'll be back with more and we'll have further. Perfect. Okay, I'd like to move along to acceptance of.
Thank you, Alex.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Alex. Thank you. You're such a good sport. I almost left you there for the night.
Thanks for having me and look forward to talking with you all more soon.
Thank you. So now that I'm accidentally skipping that portion, um, we're going to look at acceptance of highway safety grant in the amount of six thousand, six hundred dollars. You can have a hot seat.
Uh, the department applied for and was granted, uh, six thousand, six hundred dollars from the Office of Highway Safety. Um, for overtime enforcement patrols. Um, which will allow us to do overtime patrol for impaired drivers, distracted drivers, child restraint laws, as well as take part in statewide mobilizations for impaired drivers and, um, texting and driving throughout the fiscal year of twenty twenty four, which starts in October through next September. For you guys, accept the money from the state.
Any questions or comments from the select board?
Uh, so this is essentially a, a, a grant for funding some overtime.
Yes, yes. The, the grant funds the overtime for officers to go out after hours, um, to do extra patrol. So that way they're not bogged down with calls and just solely focus on, look for impaired drivers or texting and driving. You don't have to worry about answering calls.
What's the likelihood that there'd be a significant number of hours out of town?
Out of town?
You had mentioned state for, to participate in statewide.
Yes, it's all on town roads within town. It's a statewide mobilization. So every town that gets the grant does it on the same days or same week.
So it would all be money spent within the town?
Yeah. It's just a statewide, like the drivers are getting pulled over the week they set. So we have to do a specific amount of patrols during that week in town.
And you feel that that's feasible within the schedule and that's nothing you have?
Oh, yes.
You'll make it work.
We'll make it work.
No, I mean, I think it's a fair, um, I guess one of my questions would be, you have kind of some standards that you maintain in the town of Enfield for how you operate and choose to or not to get people. Um, and are we still able to meet whatever I would call Enfield standards? Are we forced into some state standards?
We're going to still meet the Enfield standards.
Excellent. I like Enfield standards. Like I worded my way around that one?
I usually put.
Okay. Um, I would entertain a motion. It's on the back page if anyone wants to give.
I will move to accept the highway safety grant awarded by the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety in the amount of six thousand, six hundred dollars for the purpose of conducting overtime speed DUI and child restraint enforcement patrols, as well as take part in statewide enforcement mobilization events such as you drive, you text, you pay and drive sober or get pulled over. And hereby authorize the town manager or if there does it be to take such action and execute all documents that may be necessary.
That was so well stated. I would like to. Okay. Do we have any further discussion on the motion on the table? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Abstentions that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Buying for.
Okay, on to the Depot Street property purchase. We've visited the Depot Street property topic many times. It's back.
This is back in front of you with very little changes. Um, last time I brought it before you, there was discussion about, um, possible contamination from it being used for oil delivery and stuff. In the past, I contacted the state multiple times on that. They did write back kind of almost asking for, I don't want to say proof, but you know, do you guys have any proof that there is contamination? They really don't want to just go test the test for no reason. I put a little more thought into it. Anything that's in the building or in the building footprint is already ours. So we're talking about the, the two little parking areas outside of that. So yes, I just wanted to come back in front of you and see if we wanted to move forward pursuing what that purchase would look like. Um, they did offer last year before we came to buy it for fifty four thousand dollars. I don't know if that would change, but it also has to go to legislative committee where we have a possibility to negotiate that price a little bit, but I don't know how much, but it's something that we can move forward with and we wouldn't be obligated until we sign on the dotted line that we're going to purchase.
Can I just ask, like, do we really want this?
Yeah, that, because I have been part of previous conversations about this. So it's just a little, a nugget of context.
I guess the hard context here is depot street is the ambulance building. That's right along the rail trail. We own the building. We don't own the land under inch. So it's a, it's a unique situation. If we wanted to move the ambulance out after we build a public safety building and sell it, it, it might be difficult. I don't know if we could just sell the building that doesn't have the land or what the, what the complexities of that would be. But I know when I came on, there was talk about purchasing that land. So we own the whole parcel of the building and we could do it as we pleased when we were done.
I think some of it was started by neighboring landowner wanting to own their front yard though. And that kind of spurred it. And I know it was, nobody, basically nobody wanted to do. Anyone wanted to give us a value on it. And I just wonder with moving out, you know, I love historic buildings. I live up in and own one. It's my problem. Um, but are we going to just buy it to appease, like, so we can sell as a package deal for someone else? And is it really going to be worth anything? Or are we going to be stuck owning this lot that is, I mean, the downstairs in that building is, it's got, like, so I mean, but it's still on the same parcel, right? Like we don't own the land under the building. So do we really want to own contamin, potentially contaminated land? Or do we say to the state, here, have a free depot, have fun?
I think we need to look at that. I think we need to look next to that is a prime rail trail parking spot. And we talked about parking the lot in the downtown. And you know, we've alleviated some of our mask on the leg parking problems in the winter by the snowmobile parking at Shed Street. And some of them have parked in this area. It's just something to think about and it would be either purchase it and sell the thing as a package or figure out what we want to do with that parcel. Or almost walk away from.
Is the depot a timber frame?
No.
It's stick though, right? So it's like, no, I thought it was stick and it doesn't have a timber frame base. So it's not like it'd be easy.
Lardwood trusses as to all railroad stations, but that's about it.
No, it's not a.
Since we've got the RFP for Shed Street out there, is it possible to add a couple of holes in the adjacent? They used to park an oil truck directly next to it. If we drilled a couple of holes, we might find out that there is some contamination and therefore that becomes a negotiable item with the state. Because that would be outside the building footprint. Our cost would only be a couple of holes scabbed on to the RFP that we're doing for Shed Street.
Well, it wouldn't be on that RFP and.
No, it wouldn't be on that RFP. However, with them in town with a drill, it wouldn't be all that much money.
They're not drilling. The RFP is not for hazard assessment. That's already been done at Shed Street.
Have we finished it in the slab in the center building?
Yes.
So we would have to bring someone in.
Yeah.
Then I would propose that if we were interested in this, that we still bring in someone to do a couple of test holes adjacent to the building.
We could talk to Kudari, the ones that did all of our drilling and testing and continue to monitor Shed Street to see if they could drill a couple of holes there. One, one well placed sample to see.
Suggesting something that might give a bit of leverage to a negotiation to drop the price from what the state is suggesting. Even below what Norm Bernashe is suggesting as well. It's still a lot of money. What he's assessed to that.
We can look at it and I can get prices and come back to you. What that would cost.
It's a fraction of an acre, is it? Or is it?
I didn't look that up.
Yeah.
Real quick. It's, yeah, it's not a full acre probably.
I mean, that's a lot for an acre. That's, you know what I mean with the, the, because it feels bigger because you have the railroad there, but then the setback from the railroad is substantial.
It was appraised based on the boundary of that, not the middle of it. Like I said, Norm appraised it of, his appraisal was at least forty thousand dollars. And the state came back about the same time and said that they appraised it at fifty four thousand.
It's ordering short.
We're close to that area. It's a buildable lot in the village. They're worth a lot more than outside the village. So I don't think it's far off of what it is. My negotiation, if we went to the state was that we're looking at putting parking to access the state rail trail, those types of amenities. That benefit the state.
Are we interested in the building at all? Or are we just interested in parking? Would we consider just tearing the building down and filling?
Oh, so I, I'm with you, John, because I think the thing is it's got value as a buildable lot in the downtown, right? But if you run a bulldozer through it, there are some people in this town who are going to be very upset. Every time I suggest raising a building has significant historical, whatever. Um, collection of oil and contamination aside, I, I mean, I just am like, I bet the like, can we even sell it? Are we going to end up being stuck selling it with covenants? And we're not even going to be able to get our money back. We invested in the land. So like, you have to keep this roof structure and it has to look like this if you can't build anything next to it. Are we?
I've had a, I don't have a dollar figure, but I've had a couple people express real interest in purchasing the building and the town. So I think there is some value in it. I think we'll get our money back out of the purchase of this for sure. What we end up getting.
Yeah, but my view is we should keep doing the due diligence and know the answer because if we're going to consider any option other than simply doing what we're doing now, this issue has to be resolved.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, it's just like tearing down buildings in Shetland. You have to do that in order to do anything else, no matter what decision you make. But I think we need to continue and know the answer, uh, in order to make a decision regardless of what that decision is. We have to do the due diligence upfront.
And even if we weren't beholden to know the answer, it's the right thing to do. Because if you're going to sell it, you want whoever goes in there to be successful and not have money. Ish.
Well, then we'll go back first. We'll come back to us, we'll go back to the state.
I know, but I feel like with the state, we'll get caught holding the bag. Oh, I mean, I just, they don't, they, it, all things flow down, come downhill to the town getting the chat.
All things up the flip side.
Yeah, all things.
So I can talk with Kudari and get a price on what it would be to do a mile or two and come back to you before we do.
I think we have to. They could always pay for the litigation before they sell it to us.
I think that's what Tracy was suggesting.
No, I, I agree. I agree. But they are, the state is very, like, as much as we're talking about, the state is very reticent to take care of any of their problems when they can force it off on us.
Well, they also have the charge, you got to say, don't ever dig a hole there.
Right.
And then we're, then we result in having a building with an unsaled lot. So doing the due diligence is the critical piece so that we know the answers before we try to make decisions.
Because we can't be buying something, offloading it off their plate and then getting stuck with it.
Just test the water in the spring.
What water?
No.
In the basement.
In the basement.
We don't even have to. You can look at the water in the basement. But I think they feel like it's the outside water, right? And the outgrounds. Is that, am I correct in understanding? They want around the building? Or will they accept a contamination sample from the basement?
Who?
The state?
It's, the state's not asking.
They, they don't.
Oh, no, but they don't believe us, right?
Doesn't matter. They don't care about the building footprint.
Well, no one knows if it is.
They own, they own everything.
They don't own the building.
No, it's everything about the building. They own underneath it, they own around it.
Immediately outside the building is the property that they own.
Yeah, they was going to say they own, like, part of Depot Street is not ours, but none of that portion is. So. Yeah. So you're going to get us a. Be happy with that.
That would be good.
Or revisit it again. Okay. This takes us to Hughes Park Backstop RFP results.
This will be quick. We were hoping to have some results for you tonight, but we had no bids turned back in. So I have Kevin calling a few of the companies to find out why not. And then we, we may release the bid again. I also asked them to get some quotes from them if you could. So if their quote comes back as something reasonable, we may just come to you asking for permission to move forward. And if not, we'll re-release the bid.
I build fences, absolutely looking out straight.
Yeah.
They can't handle anything. I have a project going on with them now and they have absolutely no capacity whatsoever.
I think putting the bid out midsummer was probably the problem.
Regardless of timing, could we maybe cut down the portion that's like letting go? But, you know, so that it's at least lower and we're not losing that top section because of not being actively used for regular tournament use. So and just maybe restrict it to just like flow in field play by families. I'm worried about that top piece.
Does the rec department use it at all? As a backstop?
The Indian River Middle School place.
Thank you.
That's their primary.
That's their primary field for the middle school?
Yeah. And then M Y F, that one used it as well.
That's spring though, right?
Yes.
So we, I'm just saying like for the fall, can we, yeah, and then get it done? I don't know. Maybe we can't get it done, but.
It may not get done in time. Yeah, we'll look at it and we'll make sure.
Is it stable enough?
It's pretty stable.
I have a lot, I've had quite a few people come into the market and drag me over to point to it. I'm like, yeah. So, I mean, it's obviously a community concern. I guess the thing we should be doing is if we have an evaluation that says it's stable, giving people kind of an update and maybe the newsletter saying.
Has our building inspector, our employee looked at it?
Lately.
A fresh report from him might be a good first step. He has to give us some ease of mind perhaps? Or not?
Yeah. And I think some of it's just communicating to the community that we are watching it, we're working on it, right? And letting them know.
Moving forward, it may not have to be as big as it is, if in fact it's only for the middle school.
If it's only for the middle school, they have, the school district has field options.
Yeah. We're going to try to fix it.
But in, but moving forward, it may not even be, need to be as large as it is.
Right. Like the middle school used to play, years ago up on Enfield and then they ripped out Enfield's field. So.
Well, they have a field in Cannon as well.
Yeah, they may. Uh, Cannon Elementary, I put in that one. Oh, good. More rain. Okay. Let's see. We all have your windows closed. Moving on to award vehicle exhaust system RFP.
Let me look at this, I get the amounts right, but we put out an RFP for the exhaust system. We got one of them back.
This is to clean air in a garage.
It, um, it actually has a, a tube that comes down and hooks right to the exhaust of the fire truck or ambulance. So when they started that big black city cloud that comes out and you're, it's sucked it straight out of the building. So that the employees are not operating in it. We only got one bid back, but I wanted to put this whole thing together because going into the bid process, the Chief Neely did a lot of work, got three bids from the three primary players nationwide that do these exhaust systems. In the first initial round, um, the plyo vent system came in at forty eight thousand, eight hundred dollars, which was the, the cheapest system of the three, wasn't it? I think few of that was, oh, few of that was eight hundred dollars cheaper. To explain them a little bit, that's a little bit more of a mechanical system. It's almost like a vice grip that hooks on your exhaust and if you drive out, it comes off and you have to adjust those every once in a while. Being from the fire service, I personally feel that the Nederman or plyo vent systems are much more user friendly because they, plyo vent uses air. So the little airbag just squeezes on to your vent and as your truck drives out, it hits a trigger point that releases the air and it goes. And the Nederman uses a magnet system that works about the same. With those, we went out to official RFP. We only got one bid back. It was Air Cleaning Specialists of New England. They came back with an amount of. We only got one bid back. It was Air Cleaning Specialists of New England. They came back with an amount of forty two thousand eight hundred dollars. That's for the system and to be fully installed. Once the building's done, they understand the lead time of the building. They said they would get this ordered, store it for us and install it when the time comes. With that, even with one bid coming back, knowing the work that we did, I'd recommend the select board authorize the purchase of this system. And I did round up that bottom figure a little bit, just, just in case there's a little bit. So I'm asking for an authorization of up to forty five thousand dollars.
So you commented that you liked the Nederman and the Flyo vent like systems. Do you have any sort of comment on what airplane specialist is gonna do?
Well, they're doing the Flyo vent.
Okay, okay.
They're doing that one. I guess the other part, just you guys have read it in here, but, um, to make it really clear that, uh, we started, Neely and Chase gave us a bid estimate of about seventy five thousand dollars to put one of these system in. The bid came in down to forty two thousand eight hundred dollars. In working with Draftin' County, some of their ARBA money, they've given the town a grant. We've received the money for forty thousand dollars. So it's, it's really putting a cost on our building budget of two thousand eight hundred dollars. So, um, good savings, good work. I'm gonna say by staff on just following up on that grant and making sure we got the money. Recommend we authors authorize purchase of this system.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Move to authorize town manager to enter a contract with Air Cleaning Specialists of New England for an amount not to exceed forty five thousand for the purchase and installation of a vehicle exhaust system to be installed in the fire and ambulance space of the new public safety building and hereby authorize town manager or his designees to take such actions and execute all documents that may be necessary.
Three seconds.
Second. I, I did have a question, however.
Go ahead.
Uh, you said we already received the forty thousand dollar grant. Do we need to make mention of that in the motion?
No, we've already, you guys already approved getting that and spending it for this system.
Okay.
Any other further questions or comments on the motion that's on the table? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Abstentions that passes unanimously. Thanks to all for the good work on that one. We love savings. You have a proposed personnel policy amendment. So a little short page on your packets.
Already.
I'm not surprised. I think we did talk a little bit about.
We're not meeting in. What actually happened is we hired Daisy and we started looking at our opt-out policy and things and we went, huh, we have nothing in there that states what happened when we have two people in one family. So we wrote the policy in front of you to, um, to be able to give them a little bit of a kickback, but not, not an opt-out on any of those items. We thought that was a little much to be on our insurance by getting opted out because they weren't taking it, but it's also a huge cost savings for the town to have on on one plan instead of two separate plans. So what we did was we took the, the single person plan as fifty percent as we had written in our normal opt-out and then minus what she would have to pay as her co-pay in the cost sharing anyway.
Right, because they would take either a two person or a family and that makes, and those are progressively not cheaper total, but cheaper per person.
I think, well, and it treats them the same as any other, which is the more important part.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I think it's a very important.
It was much more complex, like everything else is. We sat down to write this going, yeah, this will be easy. And about an hour and a half later, we were still finding nuances and ways to go. We handed it around to employees and we got a copy and it was like, okay, wow, then you start getting deep into this, it's complex. But I think we came up with a formulation that's pretty clear, pretty easy, fair for the town and fair for the employees.
Good.
Okay, so you need a motion to
authorize that.
Authorize this change to the personnel policy. Does someone want to make that motion?
I move that we change the town health insurance policy to uh, allow for the suggested changes that you had put in this statement.
Personnel policy.
Personnel policy, the truth being standard.
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussions? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Pass it unanimously. Yeah, thank you. That's a, we learn something new every week, right? Okay, cemetery trustee. This is a very fun committee, actually. They're good folks. So they really are. And so, uh, Peggy Margaret, um, that's her formal name, Di Stefano, has applied to be a cemetery trustee. She is here online. Hi Peggy, and you have her committee, um, request to be appointed in your.
Thanks, guys.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or would they like to make a motion to appoint? And, and Peggy, would you like to say anything?
I'd simply like to say that I look forward, should you approve my application, to, uh, taking advantage of the opportunity to demonstrate my civic pride and to, uh, participate in a very important, uh, mission of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Move to appoint, uh, Peggy Margaret Di Stefano as a cemetery trustee.
I'll second that.
Okay, any final discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations.
Abstentions pass it unanimously.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I look forward to serving.
Thank you.
Yes, we'll be passing us around aside and then you need to be sworn in in the town office and they will work with you on that. Thank you for joining us.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, potential, I, no, that's under information. Not needed. Okay, and so we have no administrative items, um, other business to before the select board with this public comment. I guess I should see this one first, huh? All right. Sorry. Yeah, this is other. So this is a, a late entry to the packet you guys have in front of you, a commendation. I will read it out since it was a late entry. Uh, Robert Pollard Senior is a long time, was a long time member of our fire department, um, serving last before his retirement as assistant chief. So we were asked if the select board would be willing to provide, uh, a document for his memorial service following his funeral. And so I put together this and I'm uh, happy you have changes. It's not a lot, but Bobby was, um, a really great guy and he really loved Enfield. So that was a very reasonable request. So this says, the town of Enfield, New Hampshire, by the select board, a commendation in the year two thou, I wrote this and I can't read it, two thousand twenty-three, um, Robert H. Pollard Senior. Whereas Robert Pollard Senior grew up and lived in Enfield and graduated Enfield High School. And whereas at the age of sixteen, Robert Pollard joined the Enfield Fire Department. And whereas he served the Enfield community as fireman, lieutenant, captain and assistant chief. And whereas Robert Pollard Senior was also a forest fire warden for Enfield. And whereas Assistant Chief Pollard was a certified level one, two and three firefighter in the state of New Hampshire. And whereas Robert Pollard Senior dedicated fifty-eight years of service to the citizens of Enfield and members of the Enfield Fire Department. And whereas Robert Pollard also served the community as a volunteer, coached, small business owner and was often, always there to help out the town of Enfield. Now therefore, we, the members of the select board in the town of Enfield, New Hampshire, do hereby commend Robert H. Pollard Senior for his dedication and hard work for the community. And so that's, I mean, can change it or, um, I have never written one of these, so.
Very well worded.
Yeah, okay. Um, and I didn't know it was appropriate since he has passed away, if it's still called a commendation. But then I, um, hit Elisa up for a potential like town seal or some kind. I mean, initially I was just gonna use the computer one on, but it turns out that, uh, that there's other ways to do an official town seal, so. What do you, what's the pleasure of the board? You guys?
Let's roll with it.
Do you just need a consensus? Do we need a motion, do you think?
I think a motion isn't a very, it's a very appropriate thing to do.
I'll make the motion. Um, if someone wants to second it.
I will second what you just read.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions pass unanimously. I think Elisa has a cut, one that we ran through the copier.
Nice paper.
On like slightly nicer paper. We went shopping for nicer paper.
Nicer paper is nice.
In the town office. Yeah, we're like digging through. I'm like, this one is a nicer.
Nicer papers.
Well, you know, we have economical paper in the town. That's what we discussed. And so, okay, then we are on to public comments. Go ahead, Dave.
Wanted to make, uh, uh, first, uh, one here. Candidates sworn for the upcoming special election will be seven to eight thirty PM next Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, to take care of Paul Stone and four A. Republican John Keane and David Francis, for the New Hampshire House seat, state agency resignation for health reasons. To provide appropriate balance in a partisan race, input was sought from each candidate regarding timing and format of this forum. Early public motions will be, uh, getting planned through with service in local media.
What time again, please?
Seven, eight thirty. The reason it's there is that the, uh, community building is having a refishing on the forest api.
This isn't a very much needed project.
And so we've got ready for the election. One minute, one second.
So we can scratch it up.
Okay. That is great. Do we have any other public comment, Dan? No, anybody online? Okay, this is my final call for public comment.
There's two giraffes out there getting on the ark.
Wait for me. We're gonna build the ark at my house and it's gonna float away on my basement water at this point. Let us hope that it does not cause more work for our DPDW team. All right, I will entertain a motion. Your turn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not taking opposition. We're done.
Oh, fun.
All right.
Take note of your well mobilization if we move forward.